Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of January 6, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
And Councilmember Gray.
Here.
On March 4th, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act, related to public meetings like this one. As such, Councilmember Smith is participating by phone, and all council votes tonight will be conducted by roll call. In addition, due to the recent surge of COVID-19, and based on the guidance for the California Governor's Office, the Department of Public Health, as well as the County Health Officer, the City of Bakersfield closed this meeting to the general public. The public may stream this meeting live by going to the website listed on the agenda, or watch it on the local government channel. And at this time, Councilmember Arias will offer the invocation. Would you all please stand?
Those watching from home, please bow your heads if you wish. Lord, these are trying times for our community, for our neighbors, for our businesses, our families, and even our republic. With the events that have unfolded today in Washington, DC, we are reminded of the sobering reality that we have a republic only if we can keep with it. So tonight, we ask that you bless this body with the fortitude, the wisdom, the courage, and the willingness, of course, to work closely with one another to guide our community out of this pandemic toward a more prosperous and healthy future for all citizens. Just as Jesus served the masses with unwavering humility and grace, may this council do the same for our great city. And tonight, may you bless this meeting with this new council, and of course, our great city. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And now Councilmember Gray will lead us in the pledge.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk through email or by phone call. Those comments received will not be read, but were provided to the council before the meeting and are part of the permanent public record of the meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Appointments, Item 7A, we have one appointment to the Fire Department Civil Service Board due to the term expiration of Dr. Ronald Eves on December 31, 2020. We have received applications from Dr. Ronald Eves, the incumbent, Ronald Wolf, Patrick Bowers, R. Blake Smith, and Brian Dale Spicer.
Thanks. As the city clerk provides ballots to the council, I'd like to clarify the voting process for you. Although the council will use ballots, the outcome of the vote will be made public by the clerk. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public review in the clerk's office. Councilmember Smith, could you please provide us with your selection?
Dr. Ronald Eves, please.
With a total of number of votes being seven, Ronald Eves is the apparent winner.
Thank you. Now Vice Mayor.
Make a motion and we approve Ronald Eves.
Thank you. If a motion, we'll do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman, would you pull your mic towards you, please? Your microphone, and turn on your mic so that we can have it on the record.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next appointment, please.
Three appointments to the Miscellaneous Department Civil Service Board. Due to term expirations of Tom Dorless and Ronald Wolf, terms expire December 31, 2020, and one existing vacancy. Applications have been received from Ronald Wolf, the incumbent, R. Blake Smith, Kevin Oliver, Patrick Bowers, and Austin Hibbler.
Thank you. So councilmembers, what we'll do here is we'll take the first appointment, and then we'll fill out the ballot, the clerk will tabulate, and then we'll take each one individually.
Just for...
Just mark one, and then we're going to take the votes separately. So you'll do one, and then we'll have another ballot for two.
Okay, one.
The person receiving the highest number of votes for the term, for the three-year term position is Ronald Wolf with seven votes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve Ronald Wolf.
And we'll do this by roll call? Give a motion.
Vice Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Thank you. And now the clerk will remove Ronald, and then we'll have the other names and take the Then when you're finished, just fold your ballot in half, please.
The person receiving the highest number of points for the three-year term position is Mr. Oliver with three total votes.
Vice Mayor.
Well, the remaining four must have been split, correct?
The remaining four, one for Smith, two for Bowers, and one for Hibbler.
Right. So that is correct. The one with, excuse me, the one with the highest votes takes it. And do the same process again, please.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Make a motion to approve Kevin Oliver.
Thank you. You have a motion. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
And Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll take our third appointment for the Miscellaneous Department Civil Services Board.
And again, remove the two names.
Councilmember Smith, can you please provide your selection?
Austin Hibbler, please.
The person receiving the highest number of points for the three-year term position is Mr. Patrick Bowers with five total votes. Mr. Hibbler received two votes. Mr. Smith received zero votes.
Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve Patrick Bowers.
Give a motion. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Let me turn your mic on, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next appointment, please.
One appointment to the Police Civil Service Board to serve a term to expire December 31, 2023, due to the term expiration of Kelly Lucas. We've received applications from Kelly Lucas, the incumbent, Kevin Oliver, Brian Dale Spicer, Ronald Wolf, Ryan Newman, Michael Shore, Richard Williams, and Dr. Mark Shamblyn. Councilmember Smith, can you please provide your selection? The person receiving the highest number of points for the three-year term position is Kelly Lucas with a total of seven votes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve Kelly Lucas.
You have a motion. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
And Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next appointment, please.
One appointment at large to the Historic Preservation Commission due to the term expiration of Cheryl Long, which expired March 30, 2020. We've received applications from Cheryl Long, the incumbent, Michael McCoy, Jenny Lynn Clark, and Patrick Bowers. We will be obliterating Patrick Bowers' name from the ballot as he was already appointed.
Did I mishear that with my bad ear? You should say eliminate or obliterate. It's my bad ears, I know.
Just a reminder, when your mics are on, you will be recorded forever.
Councilmember Smith, would you please provide your selection?
Cheryl Long, please.
The person receiving the highest number of points for the three-year term position is Mr. McCoy with six total votes. Cheryl Long received one vote.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve Michael McCoy.
Give a motion. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next appointment, please.
Appointment of four regular committee members and four alternate committee members to four-year terms. This is for the mayor's appointment, wards two, five, and six, to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, due to the term expirations of regular members John Enriquez, mayor's appointment, Monica Cater, Ward Two, Crystal Pinthong, Ward Five, and Bob LaRue, Ward Six, and alternate members Heather Pennella, mayor, Norma Jean Jackson, Ward Two, and Matthew Martin, Ward Five, and Sophia Felix, Ward Six. Applications have been received from John Enriquez, incumbent mayor, regular member, Heather Pennella, incumbent mayor, alternate member, Monica Cater, incumbent Ward Two, regular member, Sophia Felix, incumbent Ward Six, alternate member, Sophia Pinthong, or sorry, Crystal Pinthong, incumbent Ward Five, regular member, Matthew Martin, incumbent Ward Five, alternate member, Dr. Louis Betty, new applicant, Sue England, new applicant, Jenny Lynn Clark, new applicant, Austin Hibbler, new applicant, and Ian Journey, new applicant.
Thank you. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots are required. So I'm going to make the mayor's nomination, and then I'll call on council members from wards two, five, and six for nominations of the regular and/or alternate commission members. So councilmembers, you may fill both regular and alternate, or only regular today. So for the mayor's nomination, I nominate John Enriquez for regular committee member, and Heather Pennella as the alternate. Vice Mayor.
Would it be easy, excuse me for interrupting, Mayor, to just take a motion on yours right now, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I move the mayor's recommendation.
Perfect.
Motion. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
And Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now Ward Two, Councilmember Gonzalez, your nominees.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Monica Cater for the appointment as a regular committee member. I have no alternate recommendation at this time.
And is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Thank you. You have a motion? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now Ward Five, Councilmember Freeman.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Matthew Martin for the regular position, and Cynthia Pitthong for the alternate, so I guess I make a motion.
That would be Crystal Pinthong.
Crystal.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now Ward Six, Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Sue England as a regular, and I have no alternate at this time.
Thank you. You have a motion? Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
And Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next appointment, please.
One appointment at large to the Metropolitan Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Trust Group due to the term expiration of James Buchanan on September 30, 2020. We've received one application from Ian Journey.
Thank you. And since we only have one application, Vice Mayor.
Make a motion to approve Ian Journey.
And we'll have a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
And Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Motion is approved, unanimously approved.
Thank you. And the next appointment, please.
One appointment to the Bakersfield Youth Commission due to a recent vacancy for my... One appointment to the Bakersfield Youth Commission due to a recent vacancy for mayor's alternate appointment. The term for this vacancy expired on July 31st, 2020.
Thank you, and I would like to nominate Emily Bell as my alternate. She's a sophomore at BHS with a 4.0 average, cross-country swim orchestra, and Society for Women's Engineers. Vice Mayor?
Move the mayor's recommendation.
Thank you, and roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
And Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, and the next appointment, please.
One appointment to the Golden Empire Transit District Board, term to expire January 6th, 2025, due to the term expiration of Carlos Bello, whose term expired January 6th, 2021. We have received applications for appointment from Carlos Bello, the incumbent, and Austin C. Hibbler. Councilmember Smith, could you please provide your selection?
Carlos Bello.
The person receiving the highest number of points for the four-year term position is Mr. Bello, with four votes. Mr. Hibbler received three votes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Motion approved, Carlos Bello.
You have a motion, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AA for approval.
All matters listed under consent calendar are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless the mayor, city council member, or the city manager request a specific item be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Vice Mayor?
Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from a consent calendar item? Does any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration? I make a motion that we approve consent calendar items 8A through 8AA, along with the noted blue memo corrections by the city clerk.
Thank you. Roll call, please, you have a motion.
Vice Mayor Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
And Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, next item, please.
Under new business, we have the election of the vice mayor.
Thank you, at this time, I will take nominations for vice mayor. And would you just please press in? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Parlier?
I nominate Councilmember Ken Weir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to nominate? I don't see any other requests to speak, and if there are no other nominations, I will ask Councilmember Ken Weir if he will accept the nomination.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, vote.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce Freeman?
Aye.
And Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Congratulations, welcome to our new vice mayor. And our former vice mayor, Chris Parlier, thank you so much for your service for the last two years, and so we have something to present to you. Chris Parlier, Vice Mayor, 2018 to 2020.
Oh, that is just gorgeous, Mayor, thank you so much. Thank you.
And do you have the option of a speech or a song?
Well, I don't think, I don't even sing in church because I don't want to wreck it for anybody else, so. I thank you so much for this, Mayor, that means so much to me. You know, when I entered my vice mayorship two years ago, who would have thunk what a year 2020 would have been? But as I entered it, you have been a partner, a friend to me all the way through it. I couldn't have done it without your support or my colleagues' support, along with city staff, city manager, city attorney, the clerk's office, and all the department heads and all the staff that goes with them, and I thank you so much, and I wish my colleague Ken Weir all the best.
Thank you, and it's been an honor to serve with you. Thank you for your leadership and for your service, we appreciate that very much.
So at this point, do you want us to...
At this point, we will be changing chairs, and so I don't, is that what you're supposed to do? I think that's what it's...
I'm good.
You're good?
Okay.
You'll have your new chair...
City Attorney said settle down, so.
You'll have your new chair next time, all right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Are there any requests to speak? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll first start out by welcoming our two newest colleagues on the council. Councilmember Gray, welcome, and Councilmember Arias, welcome, I look forward to serving with you both. Thank you to Vice Mayor Parlier for all of your service as vice mayor. I know that wasn't easy, and I appreciate all the effort, extra effort. And now Vice Mayor Weir, congratulations, I thought you liked sitting next to me?
I do.
You do?
You get to come over here.
No, I don't. I'll be right here, but I'll miss you. But I look forward to your leadership as well. I have a few referrals tonight, if I may. One is referral to planning a development committee regarding park development fee credits for affordable housing units. I'd like us to look at perhaps providing park fee reductions for the purpose of affordable housing. We've encountered a few projects within the downtown urban core where motels are being converted into affordable housing, but they're incurring incredible park fees, and so want to look at that, specifically municipal code section 15.82.065, park development fee credits for multiple service medical and recovery care facilities allow for such reductions. I'd like us to see if we can incorporate and include affordable housing as well. Number two, really excited about the progress at BLNC to date. I think tonight we have over 85 beds, which are full, they're at the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. Flood, which is our contracted service provider, reaching out to the community, is saying that they can fill the shelter within, by the end of the month, and they're doing so, and I'm really looking forward to seeing that facility full, but I think it's time for us to begin planning for the future, and I'd like to make a referral to staff to develop a plan and timeline to move into phase two for BLNC, which will add an additional 150 beds to that site. It's something that we talked about when we purchased the property, and I'd like us to proceed and see a plan of action from staff. And then finally, the pandemic is causing great concern for me, obviously from the public health perspective and also the economic perspective, and there is hope with the vaccine, but there's a big question in my mind as to how we're going to roll out the vaccine when they become available for our local community. And I know Kern County Public Health has the charge to vaccinate the public and the citizens of Bakersfield, but I think it's really important for the city of Bakersfield to be an active partner, and I know the city manager's office and others have been in constant communication with public health, but I'd like us to, I'd like us to develop a plan, and I want to make another referral tonight, for the city manager's office, along with Bakersfield Police Department and the Fire Department, to develop a plan of action, a logistical plan of action, of getting these vaccines out to as many people as possible, as quickly as possible. Because if you imagine, we'll have to distribute over 800,000 shots, you know, if each individual is required two doses, and how do you do that? You know, it's going to require a plan to a scale unlike any other project that we've seen in this community, and so I think the, I think public health, you know, they're the experts in terms of the vaccine, but some of the best experts in terms of logistics and traffic control are actually with Bakersfield Police Department and the Bakersfield Fire Department, and I think that we ought to take a proactive initiative in developing a plan that then we can communicate with and work with, work with public health on. So with that, thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. A while back, Councilmember Freeman, he made a recommendation to planning and development committee regarding commercial standards, and there's been several, basically paper developments when it comes to very large apartment complexes. Now, we need multifamily, we need low-income housing, by evidence of an article that was in Monday's paper, but I think we can do things smarter, too. So I'd like to make a referral to planning and development, that we take a look at our standards for these massive apartment complexes, to see if we can do things with potential overlays or elevation standards, not only for infill projects, but in general, I think that'd be a productive conversation. Lastly, I'd like staff to do a letter to all of our local state representatives regarding the COVID-19 moratorium that has been placed on Caltrans, and Caltrans cannot do anything with the homeless because of that moratorium. It's affecting businesses through my area, and I believe throughout the city, too, but more importantly, it prevents us from shepherding these folks into potential services, and I think that if we're able to do that, we could help get them the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see other requests to speak. We've made progress with homelessness, with our shelters, but we know that there are some homeless persons who are severely mentally ill and severely addicted to substances that are in a situation where they are unable to enter one of our current shelters, and they are very service-resistant, and in spite of many, many efforts from outreach workers, floods, done a great job, and repeatedly seen some of these homeless persons, we have not been able to make progress. So I'd like to make a referral to staff to focus on alternate solutions, and Mr. Clegg, you know, we have been working together with Dr. Bear, with other, with physicians, I've been working with Sacramento, and I'd like to focus greater on alternate solutions for the severely mentally ill and severely substance-addicted in ways that we have never approached before, and you and I have discussed some of those, and I'd be happy to discuss more of that, but I know that this is a different population from the ones that we've been able to serve, we've done, it's wonderful that we've changed many lives, but this group that keeps, that we find repeatedly in the same locations and that we hear from our residents, they need a different type of service. I don't see other requests to speak. This week, we lost a dear friend, John Hefner, who was president of Bakersfield Sister City, and also formerly the principal of Fruitdale Junior High, was responsible for getting many of our students to History Day at the state level and at the national level, passed this last week. John brought our world so much closer together. John went on multiple trips to all of our sister cities. Many of us were privileged the last couple of years to go to China, to France, with him, and his passing will be greatly, greatly missed. And so tonight, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory and honor of John Hefner. We are adjourned at 6:01.